Testing. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 21st. I'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Present in the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Donley, and Bellamy. And we will, uh, correct the record when Higgins and Holloman, oh, Holloman should be online. Member Holloman is online. Thank you. So with that, uh, that's the roll call. We are now at item B. Any RFIs that have not been sent in? Uh, member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I haven't had a chance to send an email on this yet, but it is something that I'm interested in. It's been about a year since we implemented, uh, Stop It as an anonymous reporting tool for staff families and students. I would be interested in getting some sort of annual recap for the last, I guess the timelines work best as like a federal fiscal year, um, to discuss kind of the reports we've received, the types of reports, anything that was substantiated or not, just kind of a high level breakdown, what I think would be interesting and helpful to the board. Um, our investment as a district, I know is fairly minimal, but I think the data could be telling. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. I anticipate we can put that in B C, not this Friday, because of the holiday, but the next Friday.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Let the record show that Member Higgins has joined us.
I, and I apologize, I haven't sent the email either. Mine, I think, is a very simple question, but I know start, we're, we're changing start times next year. But I haven't heard anything about preschool. Can I get information as to what time, if there's going to be any changes to that? So, um, I, I did have a preschool parent ask if there was going to be changes to their start time, so.
Absolutely. That is very easy for us to, to clarify in the next B C, if not sooner, the preschool times. So we'll note that.
Thank you. Anyone else with an RFI? Okay, I appreciate your cooperation. We have one discussion item today, and that is the bond. Dr. Bryant?
We have one presentation today, and that's to continue our individual conversations that we had with board members on the school bond and CIP, and we hope to answer any outstanding questions that there are before we have our formal discussion later tonight on our two action items. So I'll go ahead and hand it off to Mr. Anderson and team.
Good evening. Um, I thought it was a great opportunity to do the one-on-ones. Um, it's certainly a good relaxed environment, uh, to make sure we're in sync with what you're thinking about. And I think everyone had plenty of opportunities to ask questions. I know some of you had other meetings, so you had to jump off, um, and go somewhere else. But it, it was pretty informative, I think, for the group. And, um, this next hour, or however long it takes, is really an opportunity for the board to talk about any follow-on questions, clarifications, um, or any discussions the board would like to have here amongst the board, uh, prior to going to an action item discussion.
Okay. Are there any questions that are left over in your inquiry? Can you just review the timeline again, please? Uh, I see you, Member Donley.
I can. We owe this to, um, Bond Council, uh, what, in about a week and a half? About a week and a half, so they can go through and do their write-up, so they can get it to the Assembly, um, in, in early, mid-December.
Okay. Thank you. Member Donley?
Did you have a chance to develop a list of what would be the next highest priority projects if the board was to decide not to move forward with Inlet View at this time?
We do. What do you like? We, we have the, the next two that, um, certainly are, are high priority projects. And Edie can talk you through those. If she didn't bring it with her, I can. It's all right. Yeah. Yes. Yes, this one.
That button? Thank you. All right. So what we talked about, um, was pulling some items for, we would pull some, propose to pull some items forward from the 2025 bond proposal that was in the CIP. Um, we would not suggest to do the secure vest group six because of all the, all the, um, things we discussed about why we split five and six apart in the first place, um, lack of contractors to do that work. There's not, not, the pool contractors is not very large for that type of work. The equipment is harder to get, and it's long lead items, that kind of stuff. So what we were suggesting was the, um, Bartlett High School improvements, design and infrastructure, and/or West High School Utilidor Phase Three.
Did you say and/or?
And/or. It depends on, you know, how much money we're actually talking about.
Right. So Bartlett, whoops. So Bartlett's a little over 13 million, and the West High Utilidor was around nine million, nine point two. And the Utilidor, for those who, who don't live under the ground, is where all the pipes and all the cabling and all the power and everything else, and you can walk through and, and see it underneath the building, and then it goes out for a while. And it really does need it. It's Phase Three. Um, the first two phases have been done. It's old school. It gets done in phases. Um, so that one's a little over nine million, Mr. Donley. But the, the bigger, more, more high priority really is the, the Bartlett High School building improvements and its design and, and modification. There's, there's quite a few things we've discovered with Bartlett. Everything from having only one elevator for a five-story building on one end, where when it goes down, which it did this year, um, if, if we would have had a problem and had to evac, we would have had to use the sleds to get, um, both adults who, um, can't walk up and down the stairs, as well as students down four or five floors. Um, so we know that as we look at, um, long-term renovations in Bartlett, that we do need another, uh, we need a backup to, to be able to get people up and down those floors. And there's other stuff. Bartlett, I, I know you're tracking after the earthquake. Lots of, lots of construction.
Okay. Thank you. Member Higgins?
I remember a number of years ago where we made a lot of modifications to Bartlett that, you know, affected everything from food service to you name it. How did this get left out if this is, I'm just curious, why, why that wouldn't include it, and what are we missing?
Well, when they took the two cafeterias, when you first walked in, you had that one really small, like, the space was just all wrong anyway, but that's where the cafeteria was. And then you went upstairs and over, and that's where the second one was. So when they did that improvement, it really was building out that huge new cafeteria. That was part of it. Um, that was my first or second year in the district.
But I think probably, Number Higgins, what you're talking about is the, when we, in the early 2000s, we did, um, phased renovations at a number of the high schools. And we did, um, do a number of phases at Bartlett. We, uh, did the new auditorium and the office renovation there. And they did, there were some other, there's some CTE classrooms and that type of thing in the library. But the voters got voter, got fatigue on all of the high school renovations that we were doing. And there's another round of Bartlett, and another round of service, and another round of Cheviac. And so it just stopped. So we never did get to the classroom wings of the Bartlett High School, um, building. So they, they are still, except for the fourth floor, we did, we did some science classrooms. But other than that, there's still 1971 classrooms.
I like the term fatigue. That's not pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Could the team speak to going, what feels to me like way back in the history machine? And, um, again, explain how it came to be that we chose to recommend as a district, uh, the replacement for Inlet View Elementary in lieu of a major renovation?
So if you look at a major renovation for Inlet View and not expand the capacity of the building to make it more capacity, that renovation itself as a one-time decision would be cheaper than rebuilding it. But if you, but during that, that building renewal and the NPR would be added in, um, it, it, there still would have been long-term capital things that a renewal wouldn't have touched, because there's things that still have 10 years left in a life cycle or 15 years left in a life cycle. So if you look at the life cycle of the building at a 20-year-plus timeline, then it is cheaper to rebuild Inlet View. I think when it, what it came down to on Inlet View was the fact that they were consistently overcapacity and a building renewal, although I would have given them an NPR, it, it wouldn't have helped solve, um, the capacity issue of a popular school. So I, I think that, um, led into it and, as well as if you look at 20 years. So if, if you look at Ursa Major, it really was cheaper because of all the damage structurally to it, to rebuild a whole new one, even whether you look at 20 years out, 10 years out, or one year out. It was cheaper to rebuild it than it was to fix it. But for Inlet View, if you look at the costs, um, for a renewal, just a, a couple examples, of course, I put that in the bottom of the stack. So if you were to do, the last time they did, um, a look at it in 2017, and it was a building life, um, extension, and they added an NPR to it, but it wouldn't really have helped capacity in terms of students. If you were to do that in today's dollars, it would be about $24 million versus about $50 million to, um, rebuild it. But as we were talking to the board in the last couple of years, and certainly last year, um, between community, um, input and, and expectations, um, I think it did really push it to a full rebuild versus a renovation. I, I think it was as much the community and/or outside influencers as it was, you know, any, any one specific reason.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Could you outline what the, it's a long-term, you indicate like the cost will be more for a major renovation? What, what does that look like in dollars? Do we have any idea? Uh, what I thought I had in my notes was a few years ago, $18 million uh, within like the first decade. If that's correct, I imagine that those costs have gone up significantly since.
Oh, well, of course, they've, almost everything has gone up 20, 30%. So, um, you know, although a renovation would cost about 24 million, um, all those next things in the next 10, 15 years is, is gonna double that.
Madam President, one, one last question?
Sure.
We, the board recently approved funding to complete, um, a funding stack with assistance from the federal government, a grant for a rebuild of our Ursa Major. Could, do you have the cost of that project, the total cost of that project off you?
I know it was around 50, but I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. And it was an 80/20 match. So the federal government would pay 80%, and we expect that grant to be awarded, um, really in the next several weeks. And then we can move forward with, um, demo and design.
And then one last.
Oh, go ahead.
The total cost for Inlet View and Ursa Major are largely comparable, then?
Well, because they're both elementary schools with, yes, they would be roughly comparable.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other, anyone else? Okay. I don't see any other hands. Go on, Member Don, Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Jim, you said that Inlet View had been consistently overcapacity, but isn't it true that prior to the district adopting its own form of measuring, um, capacity under the D E D guidelines, it was not overcapacity?
Well, when, when we do it, we look at specific programs. So if you have some programs that where you can't have more than 16 kids in a classroom, that the D E D capacity isn't relevant to that classroom. Um, I think it probably, um, I don't know that we have that off the top of our head. It's probably pretty close to 100% as opposed to 107. Um, but it is probably pretty close.
And isn't it true that if it wasn't for students being brought there from other areas, your boundary areas, that it would not be overcapacity, even under current, uh, district standards, which are more restrictive than D E D standards and the Department of Education standards?
Yes and no. If, if you were to restrict incoming students, all incoming students from coming to Inlet View, if you were also to restrict all neighborhood Inlet View kids from leaving that area, about half of the kids at Inlet View are in the Inlet View, um, area, and about half are from outside. But there's a lot of Inlet View parents that go to immersion programs and other schools. So it depends on what you're really asking. If you're asking to prevent, to continue letting Inlet View kids have school choice, but not letting other kids have school choice for Inlet View, then, then your answer would be yes. But I, I don't know how far you would go. I mean, and I, I couldn't in my head calculate the number of students all over the district who have school choice. I mean, all of our special programs are school choice.
But if you, that would be a, a good argument possibly if all the other schools were overcrowded like Inlet View, but they're not. Most of the other schools are way under capacity. So you don't have a driver of being overcapacity forcing new construction. But it's an illogical comparison. It's apples to oranges, since Inlet View is projected to be overcapacity under these district standards and not under the Department of Education standards. So that's not a valid comparison to say, well, would you cut off transfer to other schools? Because people are taking their kids to other schools. None of those other schools are overcrowded.
Oh, right. I agree with you. I just don't know when you pick one special program like IB, because it's the only IB elementary, if you decide that it's no longer IB, that would certainly change the number of kids who were even coming into Inlet View. So if, if the intent was to eliminate the IB program and put a cap on the number of kids coming into Inlet View, then you would be correct. If it's gonna be an IB choice program for the district and remain that, then it would be an anomaly to not allow parent choice for one special program over another. Although, although, I mean, I'm not bringing up a recommendation.
Right.
Eliminate IB. I'm just saying, but that's, that's the discussion that would have to be made is, does it remain an IB program? Because that's why they're coming there.
But that's, so I guess what makes me a little uncomfortable is that we are talking about, I mean, we're, we're kind of looking backwards, I guess. Uh, if we are going to start limiting our, if we're gonna start closing down choice programs because of capacity, uh, that, that, to me, appears to be a whole different discussion.
Or, or I think a better way to answer, Mr. Donley, is we could put a cap and not let any new people in and keep it at 100%. I mean, you.
Going forward.
Right.
If we capped it.
We could cap the number of people that come in.
No new people transferring in, but I'd like to follow up.
Uh, can you, yeah, we got another hand. You've done two follow-ups.
Related to the point that was just raised, though.
Go ahead.
The IB program was just recently instituted.
I think it's been three years.
It's been a few, it was pre-COVID.
Yeah, but it's very recent. It's a recent development.
Four years. Yeah, Roger.
Yeah. Um, so the argument about needing a new school was pre that. And I, I frankly, I voted against it at the time, because I thought it was unfair, because it required that school to get additional teachers or at least one additional staff more than any other elementary school under the standard, uh, matrix of staffing. So anyhow, I just wanted to point that out, that it's a recent development.
Thank you, Member Donley. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, so I'm, I'm digging back to kind of the postmortem data we did after the 2022 bond, which I, please, I don't expect you to have memorized, but, um, there's a question there, I promise. The, the two big catalysts from that data that we, we did proved that, that the largest drivers for, um, the lack of support of the 22 bond were the move to an every-other-year cycle and the size of the bond. My question, I guess, is in, in light of that data, we switched back to, um, an annual bond as a, as a board, made that decision. This is our, our first, um, kind of consecutive bond, uh, after we've switched back. How did we arrive at the figure of roughly 60 million? And can you speak to the administration's level of confidence in that? And, uh, with the data you have now, with that passing? Thank you.
Well, you certainly look at historically the last several bonds. And, and you're correct, a $110 million bond, as the city's coming out of COVID, um, was even by the post-survey, uh, or the post-election survey, was kind of a sticker shock for an awful lot of people. By and large, most every bond in the 50, 60-plus range has passed. A $110 million, I clearly didn't. There were, there were other factors. I mean, but a lot of it, um, and everyone knows what they are. Um, there were other things going on that certain groups in the community were, were anti-bond that year. But part of it, I mean, a large part for the people who, um, had no political grouping with anybody on something, it really was probably sticker shock.
Could I follow up, Madam President?
Yes, you may.
And so then, um, we have potentially the end of the moratorium coming up in '25. If, if that, if that doesn't happen for one reason or another, do we anticipate 60 million or so being kind of the new normal from, from administration in terms of projected bonds? Or is this kind of, we're taking it year by year?
I, I would hope that we could go a little bit higher. I think, um, as, as, uh, some of the board members who've, who've been on, I think, uh, for two of you, you know, what, seven years, eight years between you and Member Holloman, you've seen our total deferred maintenance go from 750 million to a billion in six years. And honestly, 60 million a year is not gonna let us catch up. It, it, it's simply not. Um, the value of 60 million now versus the value of 60 million eight years ago, it, it's the exact same number, and they don't have anything in common.
Madam President, could I just one last follow?
Yes.
And I, I am not a professional at this, which is why I ask more people like yourself. But this armchair analyst view is that without school bond debt reimbursement, catching up isn't feasible. Is that fair to say?
I don't know how the community could, could absorb it. I think you, I think, uh, you know, obviously, over the next year or more, um, as we talk about, what does the district need to look like six years from now, four years from now, two years from now? And we look at, at potentially some facilities going offline or being used for other purposes. You know, that will change the dynamic. If, if like Abbott Loop, um, a lot of people last year got hung up over the million dollars in staff that Abbott Loop saves. The reality is, when you close, close and demo that school, long-term, it's gonna save the city 30 to 40 million that otherwise would have had to be addressed. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think we'll ever be in a point where mass school closures and demos is ever even talked about realistically. Um, with Willow Project coming online and some other initiatives, the billion-plus dollars in construction money coming to the state, and, and, um, including his recent deal for Powder Ridge to increase, um, family housing in that area. You know, there is certainly the potential, even with a 3% vacancy rate in real estate across Anchorage right now, there's now the, the potential for it to grow, at least out in that area. So, you know, I, I don't think you can draw a line and say, well, Anchorage has dropped every year for five years, and keep drawing that line until there's three people left. I mean, that's not realistic. At some point, we either level off or, or we, we start growing again. But taking off old facilities that need a lot of money, like Abbott Loop, that makes sense. Repurposing facilities so you can save money for charter schools or put special programs in, those make sense. All across the country, people are doing it. You know, I don't think Anchorage is in a boom state right now. And, and I think that will be the discussions next year.
See, no, see, no hands. Member Higgins?
Yeah, I, I agree with the bond debt reimbursement from the state would help a lot. But right now, I think, and this is the issue that I raised in a, in our meeting, um, different bond packages can be on the, can be on the ballot. We've got major, we've got roof issues, you've got safety issues, you've got reconstruction-type charges. And the public out there putting them all together gives you, if you got one reason why they're upset about this part, they vote against the whole thing, you name it. But I think the public gets a chance to be able to say, this is what's most important, and do it. That we've got a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance. There's more than enough justification. We've got to do roofs where they're leaking, uh, where they're damaging. I don't want black mold. I don't want all the safety issues associated with that. And, and so we've got some schools we simply need to do that with. We've got the, uh, the cubicle safety issues within the schools, which is critical. Um, and, and, and the others. Some of it is just addressing improving educational situations. But right now, with, with as much as we've got with a backlog of deferred maintenance, it seems to me that the 64 million is not a big issue to me. But trying to put together one bond with a larger number than that doesn't make sense anymore. And I think that the public would like to see it broken out different, and that's my view.
Clarification? You said broken out different? As in?
You know, you go to the immunity, they've got 10 different bonds, right? If you go to the school district, we've had one bond with every type of item in, in the world in it. And, um, so I think we are out there with some, you know, renovation-type thing with roofs kind of thing and, and, and safety issues. If we had an energy issue out there, we could do it. That would be popular with some. You, you've got to deal with the, you know, elementary, the other safety kind of things with safety improvements. And then we've got some that are renovation-related, uh, that would be grouped together as separate bonds. So I can see having four different bonds out there with lesser numbers. You know, some of them may not be that much, but the roofs are a cost, and it's stupid not to do something about the roofs. The public is gonna buy that we don't want roofs that are leaking and that we've, they're part of the deferred maintenance, and they're gonna cost us more money later if we don't fix it now. And when it comes to safety issues, safety is number one. So in some of our schools, the cubicle, the, the type of arrangements coming into the school with elementary is still a safety concern, and we don't want that to be, remain out there. So we've got just several different areas out there that I believe that if they're broken out in different bond packages, would be much better for the public to be able to decide. They get to decide what they consider the priorities or, we're giving it to them in a way that they can probably easily understand it and appreciate that they have a clear. that they have a clear choice.
I think, I mean, you made some good points during our one-on-one, talking about that, and next year's bond survey will be formulated to go after that exactly, to try to figure out how people are thinking in terms of whether it's safety or energy efficiency or specific type things. I think we just, anytime you build multiple bonds, you want to spread the projects out across the broader community as much as possible in order to get more buy-in in April, but I think it's well worth going to the, going to the city and finding out, is that something they support? And to take it a step further, we just couldn't get there between Friday afternoon and today, really looking at that as a, as a option. But, but just like the August, September, October, November briefs that we did this year with capital plans, next year, we'll be taking these large chunks of type things and make sure the board understands all of those major groupings within the district and how we prioritize, and, and maybe on, on many of those, how much really needs to be part of major renovations as opposed to looking at them as standalones. But that was some good conversation.
Okay, thank you. As odd as it may seem, Inlet View is not the only school in this bond. There's Cassoon, Lake Hood, Clatt, Alpenglow, Chuyac High School, Romig Central, what am I missing? I think that's, that was on my list.
Did you, if you got Alpenglow, I think you got them all.
I got it, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, not seeing anyone else. Member Donnelly, we'll do a second, third round.
Thank you, Madam President. Another good reason to break those out, as Member Higgins is suggesting, would be you could really focus in on the availability of labor and contractors to do those jobs during the upcoming next period of time, because there's different types of contractors doing different types of work. And right now, it's, it's a restraint on, on what we can put out there on the street because there's just not the ability, there's not the construction capability that we might want to prioritize. So we have to take that into consideration also, and by breaking it up, you could really focus in on the availability of contractors and work to be able to do that work in a timely manner.
You know, I think, thank you, Member Donnelly. I do recall years when we've had a couple of bonds, not very many, but they failed. I don't know if you have, do we have the data when we split things out like that? And it's been, it's been a while.
I went back quite a ways, and there were some years, of course, I wasn't in the districts, I don't have, I can't look at, like, there were three bonds in two past, I don't know what was the reason.
I understand.
So I couldn't really do a-
Well, I know of one, because it was Winder Middle School when I was the principal. And it was horrible because we went from a new school to no school to a renovated school. And that's like five years, and all of that happened when it got pulled off and put by itself.
When you look at Clark and Eagle River High, those took several years to be able to get those through. So there's certainly, I think, having put some thought into it after talking to Member Higgins and Donnelly Friday, I, I think if we were to do separate bond packages, it is, but it is nice when you can spread out the projects on a package, if that's a concern. If a standalone project has what, what the board believes to have broad community support, then, then maybe the risk is less. But, you know, anytime you can, anytime you can hit more districts than not, you're, you feel a little more comfortable.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
I'm going to beg your indulgence to allow me to maybe make some links here. I've been spending a lot of time thinking about the history of education funding in the state of Alaska as far as the founders set out a vision for education. And one of the things that struck me, especially in looking at, I think it was, I mean, I would call it a really dynamic, the 1970s and 1980s were a dynamic period of time in Alaska. Students who had been in a separate system of Bureau of Indian Affairs schools were brought into public schools in, in the state. The state responded to new federal mandates for special education, bilingual education, and stepped up the level of funding for all of those students. And I think in my reading that I've done so far, you know, operations and instruction is different than these capital projects, right? But to me, the vision for education that people decades before us have set out is inclusive. It is that we will take care of all of our students, and I feel like we need to apply that vision to our bond packages. I think we are setting up schools for failure, especially as we dig deeper into our billion dollars of deferred maintenance. If we hang them up separately and say, there's this project, there's this project, there's this, there's this project, we need to tell our community that we care about all of our kids and that we are in some way acting as the people who have come before us have set out. So I would encourage the district to retain a single bond model because I think that is going to be a better way of providing for all of our kids. Just my two cents.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Is there a other comment? Member Higgins?
Yeah, I respond to Member Donnelly's comment, because in our discussion, we talked about how many roofs they could even do. So even if we wanted to do a major project with all, catching up with all these roofs, it's not possible because of the skilled level, level of skilled number of employees and programs out there that can even do the work. And I appreciate that combining all these from the history, though, has been one where we got, we've got different schools where they have to do work in different locations, and if you only pick one location, everybody else votes against it except for that one location. So it became political to combine them all rather than keep them separate because of the location out there. But I hadn't thought about the impact of the other project areas and what the labor force would limit what we can do even with renovations of schools or anything else, what's realistic that we could even pull off during that timeframe. So that's kind of a, that'd be something good to educate the public on, too, what we're up against when the bond goes out and explaining to them, we're limiting ourselves with a massive backlog of this, but we, we, if we don't do it now, we can't, we won't be to add it to the next one either. So the safety issues and extending the life of the schools is what we're doing with roofs and things like that is a critical timeframe. I think that's a strong sales point to the public, and I think that will, that would help.
Other comments? Is Member Donnelly, I mean, uh, Member Holloman's hand up? No? Other? Any other questions? No, he's not, his hand's not up, I was just checking. Go on.
Thanks for bringing up the historical perspective, Member Lessons, because, as I look back over that time, it's quite concerning as somebody from Anchorage. The state fully funded the construction of schools all over the rural parts of the state, but really didn't have any kind of equal treatment for the students in Anchorage as far as funding. And, and I wouldn't even have minded it so much if they would have had just some even de minimis contribution from every community that got a new school, but they didn't. The state paid for them 100%. And there was clearly a correlation to that lack of local input into the cost of those constructions with the successful future maintenance of those schools. They lacked a lot of what normally should have been provided, and I think if people had been locally invested in the cost of those schools, they would have done a better job maintaining a lot of aspects of those schools. Because of that, the state was in the business of fully replacing those schools because they would become so run down over a period of time, and once again, with no local contribution at all. And yet, communities like Anchorage were expected to come up with huge amounts of money locally through local taxes. It wasn't that I wanted some draconian taxes on anybody, it just, I wanted some degree of local investment in, into education by everybody. I just didn't think that that is the kind of thing that a community should just not invest in at all and get it all done for them by outside money coming in. So that was a concern with those decades, that when I first got there, the standards for construction, for measuring whether you needed a school or a school was under capacity, over capacity, did not include portables. In other words, I went to a portable in fifth and sixth grade, but the portables were under the Department of Education rules, fully housed. They didn't, they didn't count towards a need to address the capacity. There was one thing I worked on as a legislator, was changing that, so that just because somebody was in a portable, didn't mean they were properly housed and that school wasn't, you know, needing an addition or to, to deal with that. So it was very biased against urban schools, and especially where there was a lot of urban growth at that time.
Any other board member wishing to speak? Yes, Member Wilson?
I've been spending a lot of time listening to everybody's comments, and I appreciate everybody's perspective. I just wanted to throw out there that my job as, as a school board member, as I see it, is to represent the best possible way, all of our kids, all of our students around the district. And by, for me, the, the conversation about breaking out projects, it doesn't sit well with me because it, for me, it opens up the possibility of having certain areas of town with a lower density of voters to not have their school needs met particularly for that reason, because they have a lower density of voters. So to start that process, I would not, I would not support breaking out projects for that, because I, again, my, my job, as I see it, is to represent in the best possible way all of our students from the entire Anchorage vicinity, Chuyac, Girdwood, I mean, so I just wanted to throw that.
Thank you. You know, I, in my recollection, this is the third year we've had this conversation. I cannot even imagine how the families in Inlet View are feeling, because I've been there and I've had that feeling, when we're trying, when our building is insufficient, but we're trying to feel valued, and there's just no path forward for, for a renovation or rebuild. So our hopes and our dreams get blow, get elevated, and then they die. So, you know, we committed a year ago and the year before that, not the whole board, because it's always been a divisive issue, and I understand that, but we made a commitment to that community. And I don't see that that has changed. I know that we are in dire financial straits. I know that. We knew that when we, when we put aside money toward that rebuild, and we put, put money aside because we felt that's what was needed. Just like with Erson, Erson, Erson Minor, we, we, we just happened to get feds to support us on that one. So the, the burden of keeping our commitment to that community was really lessened because of the help of the federal government. So if we, every time we talk about a bond, we're going to only pull out and talk about one community, I, I just don't think that's fair to the, to the, to that, to the community. And I don't think, in my fiscal duty, I agree with Member, Member Wilson, I agree with Member Lessons, we can't be having separate bonds. If we want to look toward that in the future and let, and, and figure out if that is really what the community wants, then I think we do it. But we have a week and a half to get this package, this bond package, to the Muni. Last year, we did the same thing. We had this, this meeting, this work session, we went into our meeting, we had to actually schedule another meeting because we weren't quite sure. And so either we're going to commit, we're going to meet our commitment and work our way through all of the hassles, or I, I just don't, I don't know, but it makes me very uncomfortable that we have to have this particular conversation on this particular community every single year. That's all I have to say. Anybody else would like to say something? Let me check online, nope. Go on, Member Donnelly.
Well, I don't see this as about that particular community, I see this about our entire city, and whether we should be committing to build an entire new school when we're actually being asked by the administration to begin a discussion of closing down 10 other schools. The board could have adjusted attendance ballastries to deal with this, but the board hasn't chosen to do that over the past five or six years, except for some minor exceptions. And if you go back over the history of this, you know, you talk about this process, I do anyhow, I'm concerned with this process, because, you know, we live in a constitutional republic, and we don't live in a democracy, we live in a constitutional republic. Now, we have some democratic elements to our constitutional republic, those include initiatives, referendums, and bond packages are similar because they're voted in a democratic way, a majority rules on bond packages. Now, when you structure an issue like a $50 million school for the voters, the first time this was on the ballot, it was mixed in with $40 million earthquake repairs. So the board, voters had a Hobson choice of saying no to designing a new school or passing on repairing our schools from earthquake damage. At the time, I moved to separate it out and have the earthquake repairs voted on separately because obviously they had massive community support, but that effort failed. And then the next time the dollar amount came up, I believe they were combined with school safety projects. And I'm strongly in support of, of these school safety projects, the improvements with the vestibules in elementary schools, because I'm very concerned about the safety of our students, given the historical architecture that a lot of those schools are faced with, inability to effectively control, to do as good as we could do with controlling access to the schools. So the voters have never been given a fair choice here. I mean, they've always been forced to choose between something very essential like school safety and going down the road to build a $50 million school for $40 million in earthquake repairs versus, I think, 1.5 or money for designing a $50 million new school. And that's what led us to this point. I don't think that was very democratic, actually. I think that was unfair to the voters to put that proposition forward in that manner. And we know that the year the bond did fail from the survey, that the margin of difference was Inlet View School, building an entire new school. And I don't think it had anything to do with that particular neighborhood at all. It had to do with whether it was the right thing to do, build an entire new school, or to go with what the voters, I think, would clearly have supported by the polling at the time, and that was a major rebuild, which I supported consistently also, that I believe the voters would have approved it that year if it would have been a major rebuild rather than moving towards an entire new school situation. And I think the neighborhood, there was a lot of support in the neighborhood for doing that, too. And so-
I see you, Member Holloman.
I think it's just very concerning that the voters have never been given a straight-up choice about such a huge project. And if you go back historically, voters were given an option for some of the larger school projects here historically. And yeah, maybe they did, they did fail first time, but then people got educated on them, and eventually they all got passed, and they were straight up and down votes on building a new high school. And that's, that's the way the democratic process ought to work. People shouldn't have been forced to choose between school safety and building a new high school. They should have not been forced to choose between repairing roofs and building a new high school. And the process worked out in the end, the voters came around and through education and support for it, and I would, I think that the truly democratic way to do this would be do that with this project also, let the voters vote it up or down on merits as a standalone issue, and it has nothing to do with this neighborhood.
Can you summarize so that I can have, let Member Holloman speak for the first time?
Thank you.
We have about 10 minutes. Are you done, Member Donley?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Thank you. And I have to admit, I've gone around in circles about this and during our briefing. I do come back to one point, and that is when we go to the public, we're not really asking their advice on this. We're asking if they will approve our borrowing money. When you look at the differences of opinion we have, and we've all spent a lot of hours looking at school closure issues, looking at our budget, looking at the things we're up against, most members of the public simply aren't going to have that breadth, they're not going to have the access to the same resources we have. I think it is incumbent on us to bring a package forward that represents the balance of what we have to do. And sadly, we do have to balance between repairing roofs and safety and new schools and all of that. And I, I do believe we should go ahead with it and it's incumbent on the board to explain why we feel like this is the package that's good for the whole city, that has a balance for all kids across our district and move forward that way. I think it will be a tough sell. Bonds kind of are, but we need to get back and do that. And I have to agree with what other people have said. If we start singling out large projects that are localized in the city, we probably won't ever get them passed. And we, we don't have a choice. None of us are asking Inlet View to be rebuilt because we just want to spend money. We think that's what has to happen in the long-term best interest of the city that's going to be here for quite a while. And we have to go out and try, try to explain that to folks. So I, I don't, I don't want another bond package to fail. That's really difficult. But I also don't want us to, to split it up to where basically projects have to go out and sell themselves to the whole town individually. And I do think it's incumbent on us as a board to make those choices, take our case to the public and hear their response on whether or not we've, we've done our job convincing them.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Member Jacobs? I didn't see you, sorry. Member Lessons?
I guess I want to bring this discussion back to what, at the end of the day, beginning of the day, this is all about. It's about a kid's ability to sit in a classroom and learn. And I'm reflecting on my youngest's experience last winter and he wasn't alone, right? Kid, I remember being in Juneau with Member Wilson. We were looking at pictures with legislators from leaky classrooms all over the city. And in my own student's classroom, you had an entire classroom space that was effectively cut in half because of the number of drips in the ceiling. So the learning environment is being deeply undermined by the structure of a billion dollars in deferred maintenance. So instead of 27 or 29 second graders in a classroom, you had 27 or 29 second graders in half of a classroom, moreover, attenuating not to the lesson that was subject to the day, but to counting the drips in the buckets. And that's not effective for our learning environment. And so at the end of the day, this bond package is designed to improve the learning environments for as many kids as we can possibly muster in any given cycle. So for me, that's what it's about and I don't want to sit and send any of these kids, make them stand by themselves and advocate for any one school. They're all our kids.
Thank you very much. Member Jacobs, did you have a question or a comment?
Just a, just a comment as we kind of wrap up, since we're getting close to our time to begin executive session. I did want to express appreciation to the administration and the team that made this bond proposition proposal a reality. I know ultimately having seven laypeople, the work that caught us here tonight is an interesting process and interesting way we do things, but please know it doesn't go unappreciated and I think we have a good product here. So thank you.
Thank you. We are down to our last six minutes. If anybody is compelled to say, take two minutes and say anything else, this is your time. Otherwise, I want to thank, I also want to thank you guys, thank the administration. This is not easy work, we understand it. And at least Member Jacobs didn't call us the seven-headed monster. He just said seven-headed laypeople. In our private circles, that's kind of what we call ourselves as board members throughout the state, is that seven-headed monster or nine or whatever you have. So anyway, it is, it's hard work, but it's also work of the heart. And we bring to it our limited perspectives and what makes sense for us, but then you give us the facts and the data, which helps us to figure out where we want to land. And so I thank you guys for that. Yes, Member Donley?
Senator?
Other than the bond, the only item on here is the bond today. The only item for discussion is the bond today. Is there any other questions on the bond?
Madam President, we move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations and contracts.
Second. Moved in second to go in, to enter into executive session for the purposes of legal, whatever you said, Member Jacobs. I appreciate it. Thank you. Seeing no, is there any objection to going into executive session? Seeing none?
Recording. Stop.